Okay, six o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. We're gonna do a roll call and as I asked you, be prepared with one word that you would use. What is it? One word to describe how I feel about the Painesville area school district is. And to call your name out, give it, and if you didn't prepare yourselves, you can just say here. Okay? So for me, for Rick, optimistic. Thomas?
Excited.
Gerald? Awesome. Rachel?
Great.
Ron?
Evolving.
Bruce?
Good.
Cheryl?
Right.
All members are here and present. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Uh, there was, was one donation that was added to the agenda and that has been updated.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Let me make the motion.
No.
I second it.
Moved and seconded, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved. No public comment. Move on to our consent agenda. You have the minutes from our previous meetings before you, which you hope we've reviewed. And Cheryl, do you want to say something about finances?
Um, yeah, everything seemed normal. I had noticed the money came in, or money went out, whatever, for the fundraiser for the FFA and they must have had a fantastic sale because the numbers were big. And then it's all pretty much normal stuff.
Okay. Janelle, you want to run a search engine?
Sure. Um, so on the personnel items, you're gonna see lane changes. So twice a year, staff are able to submit the lane changes. Just as a reminder for the board, the way that process works is that all the credits are pre-approved and so they submit their, their courses and their, um, what it is that they are planning to take and how it applies to, um, their development. And then when it is done, they submit their transcripts and we're able to apply the lane change. So we have two lane changes. Some of the hires, a couple of things that you're gonna see on there. ECFE session two, so that's a little bit later. We usually have that on in January, or at the, um, we usually have that on in December in anticipation of, um, uh, January's session, but those are, those are pretty standard. Couple of the others, um, we just, I don't know where they, they didn't, they've been here. Connor and Tegan have been, and Susan have been here and, um, we're just catching up, finding, I didn't have a document for them, so making sure, maybe it was there somewhere and I missed it, but, um, just double making sure that that's official. You will notice that we have Kristi O'Brien, our community director, um, who actually started yesterday. So that was nice and we actually had our community education advisory council today. Thomas was able to be at that, so it was nice, it's nice having her on board. Couple of resignations that I want to call out. Jay Thompson is retiring, uh, at the end of this school year. It's been a great asset to our science department. And then Cindy Anderson, the custodian at the elementary, also retired. She actually retired at the end of, um, December. So, um, letting you know about those personnel items. And then as far as donations, um, what we have on our donations this month, we have, you'll see contributions from Yarmen Ford, Rotochopper, and Norland Lutheran Church. So we thank them for their generosity to the playground equipment, robotics, and the pop packs.
Okay. The consent agenda is before us. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion, Bruce.
I'll second it.
Rachel, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? There we go. Okay. Janelle?
Your report.
All right. So, uh, some communication pieces for you today, um, in the financial reports, um, in the, I want to start with the, um, the revenues, uh, document, and I'm gonna share that because there's one piece I want to, um, highlight for you. There we go. So again, just as a reminder for anybody that, um, is online, or if you're looking at, if you want to look at this document, just make sure that you come over to the right tab. So each tab, um, you'll have a month for each tab, so we're reviewing December. So again, we do the previous month after the, um, the books are all finalized. So the one thing I wanted to point out to you is on our, um, property taxes and you'll see, um, you'll see in our, scroll, move my document over here, in our current year-to-date versus previous year-to-date, you're gonna see, uh, apparently I'm in the document. You'll see, um, my name comes up there, um, 104,000 less. I wanted to just speak to what that is and why that comes in that way. And, um, Carrie and I had a conversation about this, just to make sure that we're all on board, um, that getting with our revenue. The way our revenue comes in with, from our tax payments, it comes in just as a lump sum from, for example, from Stearns County. And we, so now if you come down to the bottom and you look at, um, our different funds, okay? Many of these, like community education, that has, has money that comes in from our taxpayers, but when it comes in, as does our debt service, um, those monies that come in from Stearns County, for example, they all just come in, in one lump sum. So as we distribute that money throughout the course of the year, there'll be times where you'll see, um, like in the grid above, you'll see a deficit, but at the end of the fiscal year, those are all rectified and they're all balanced out. So I just wanted you to be aware that we're on, we're not, um, not getting funds as we expected. They just, when they're, like these, for example, were not allocated to the general fund and this is reflective of the general fund. Okay? So I just wanted to share that. Otherwise, in, in looking at the other revenues and expenditures, there was nothing else to specifically call out unless there are questions from board members.
Any questions?
Okay. All right. So the next thing I'm gonna pull up is, um, a state of the district. So, um, again, this is not my brilliant idea. I stole it from a number of other superintendents who are much smarter than I, um, but I really liked the, the work that it did and I reached out our administrative team, um, our, some of our teaching staff, all pulled together this information. And it really is an intention to try to share with, um, our community and really anyone that would be, um, maybe even wanting to check out our district. What is the state of our district and what's going on and what does this look like? So I'm gonna have to, um, click through a couple of different things. So up on the screen is our PowerPoint. So, um, again, here is our, what we're, I'm gonna briefly cover today. You will see, um, a number of items that we're gonna highlight, but those are all the areas that are in this, uh, presentation. If somebody wants to just, um, kind of, I guess, jump down to a section, they certainly could do that as well. That just jumped funny. Okay.
Delayed for some reason.
It was a delay, yeah, that was odd. So first off, the mission, the vision, and the goals. So what are the mission and the vision of, um, the Painesville area schools? So our mission is to prepare students with the academic, social, and personal skills to succeed in their career and community. So this is part of our strategic plan. It's the information that we come back to when we make decisions. The vision you'll see also has been identified through the strategic plan. Preparing students to succeed in an ever-changing world by nurturing and developing natural curiosity, creating critical thinkers and problem solvers who possess dynamic academic skills, maximize potential, and build foundation of reasonable, ethical, and compassionate members of our community. So those are all some, some pretty big vision, visionary things as we look at our district. And then finally, the goals that are on our strategic plan, they are threefold. We talk about growth, having emotional and physical wellness, intellectual wellness, and social wellness. We talk about communication, clear, concise, and transparent. And we talk about fiscal allocation, being fiscally responsible and stewards of our funds. So where does this take place? Where do we serve our students? These are the buildings that we have, along with how large they are. I thought it was interesting to learn that the Minnesota Department of Education has our official record of our elementary as 1911. That serves pre-K through fifth grade. Our high school, um, serves sixth through 12th. And you'll notice the occupancy dates are the original of the foundational part of the building. 1965, our vocational center was, uh, was built. 1961, the maintenance shop. And in 2015, our, um, Painesville baseball stadium and storm shelter was built. So who are the people that serve our students? Our, our district staff has five licensed administrators, or five administrators. You'll see that there are, is an asterisk there that we are still searching for buildings and grounds director, along with the technology director. You'll see 72.7 certified, um, FTEs for teachers. I think it's really important to point out and call out that 45 of our 72 staff have a master's degree or above. So that's a pretty amazing, um, amazing amount of staff that are highly educated across our, our teaching, um, our teaching unit. Uh, you will also notice Education Minnesota represents our teachers. Our professionals are also represented by Education Minnesota and we have 25 paras. We have eight custodial maintenance, uh, employees that are represented by SEIU, the Service Employees International Union. Food service is also represented by SEIU. There are 10, um, food service staff. And then we have non-union employees such as administrative assistants, PaaS, support staff, and there are 10. So, um, we have approximately 130-ish staff. That's just our direct employment. We continue to work with, um, entities such as West Central Education District. They provide staff that support, provides services and supports to, um, our students. We can, we work with, um, um, the reading corps and so we, we do work with some additional staff as well, but that's the core of our staff. So what does our community look like? Sometimes I think people maybe aren't aware of what our district boundary looks like, so I wanted to share that out for you as well. You can see that we, uh, our community that we serve, Painesville, Lake Henry, Roscoe, and Hawick, along with Regal. So as I mentioned earlier, 1911 is when our elementary was actually built. They tried to build an elementary school beginning in 1859. So this information is found in the Painesville Historical Society, which I think is kind of interesting. I know some of our students go check that out, so I thought it might be fun to put in for a little bit of history about our, our community growth. And, um, the rural schools started coming into Painesville in about the 1960s. So that's when our, our rural communities stopped having the one house and they came, the kids were bussed into the school district in Painesville. So a little bit about our community. Uh, one of the things I think it is really important to recognize is that our business community is highly supportive of the Painesville school district. In this video, in this PowerPoint and presentation, there's a short three-minute video. I'm not gonna share it to, right now at this moment because people can click on the link and look at that if they'd like to. But our Chamber of Commerce did a really nice job highlighting the, the industry and the growth of our, um, of some of the businesses throughout the Painesville community. And I think that's really important for us as a school district because when we have employment opportunities, we have the opportunities for families to be in Painesville and that's pretty important. So you're gonna see a number of partnerships that have evolved through those businesses and just from our surrounding communities. And I think these are, partnerships are important to recognize because, um, not only are they, are they financial support in many ways, shapes or form, they provide support through mentorship, through volunteering, through community, just connections, um, for our students, our staff, and really the, the community, the greater community. So it's important to recognize the partnerships that we have across our community. One of those things that comes through that partnership is our community education program. So community education offers our early childhood family ed and preschool. We have youth enrichment and recreation programs. We have our PaaS childcare, which is our pre-K through fifth grade. We heard today that we're averaging about 100 kids, um, in that program, uh, on an average week. We also offer adult enrichment and recreation programming, which I think is, is important. One of the things that comes to mind when I think of that is our, our opportunity for community members to come in and use our welding site within our, um, career tech ed, um, addition that took place a couple of years ago. So we have good opportunities for enrichment and recreation. Our live stream, um, has been a, a huge asset to our community as we're talking about activities. And then we also have, um, community ed, district facility and scheduling that takes place, um, in those areas. Our PAC is our, our newest addition to the Painesville area schools. So we've got, um, a 24-hour community center with the fitness equipment, the walking lanes, we've got our, our courts where individuals are able to play pickleball, tennis, basketball, badminton volleyball, and, and just any, any type of activity that they would like to court-side. You'll notice that, uh, there is a, um, there's a golf training zone, the wrestling room, and PAC parties, all part of our new community center that has, was added during our, uh, 2019 bond project opening in 2021. So that's an exciting addition to our school district. So thinking about, then what is it that we do? School districts have to present what's called a world's best workforce. Board members, you approve the plan, uh, in December, but really that is kind of the, the charge of, of what is it that we do? We make sure that all kids are ready for school, all third graders can read at grade level. There's a racial and acad, um, economic achievement gap, um, limited between, uh, groups. We're talking about being career and college ready and graduation rates from high school. So as we look into that, um, we're gonna talk a little bit about how that happens and what that looks like for our school district. So where's our academic foundation come in? So when we talk about an academic foundation, we really have to think about what are the things that we do academically and behaviorally to build a solid foundation for all of our kids? So we start with solid core instruction and then we move into targeted services by having a universal screening of how kids are doing. Are they performing at grade level? Do they have the skills necessary? If they don't, then what do we do? Then we look into, um, targeted instruction. If more than 20% of a class needs an, an intervention or needs a skill based on the information that we have, then we, we focus in that classroom on core instruction. So tier two and tier three, we're gonna talk a little bit more about later when we get to the elementary, but that's something that I think our school district has done really well. And it's what, what we've coined the phrase, and I guess I won't say we, what has been coined because it was here before me and it's really an important phrase, is power half hour. How are you taking time to really give powerful focused intervention on a specific targeted piece of instruction? So that's one of the foundational components that happens in our academic area. The other thing that happens is we have early childhood focus. And when you have an early childhood focus, you can make sure that our kids are prepared to come into kindergarten and they are more, um, academically and socially ready. Um, I think some of our kindergarten teachers have experienced over the last couple of years, um, when students have not been part of preschool programming and early childhood intervention and how difficult and stressful that can be. So let's talk just a little bit about academic proficiency. So before you panic and kind of go, oh my gosh, my eyes are all over the place, let me just explain these two slides and you can look at them a little bit more closely in the future. The first top graph is our MCA reading proficiency and the bottom graph is our fast bridge reading proficiency. So the reason I'm including these two sets of data, and you are going to see the color correlation is based on grade levels. Okay? So what we're doing is I'm gonna just take like this, this yellow up at the top that started at grade three and I could follow that class all the way from grade three, grade four, grade five, grade six, grade seven, grade eight. And then we skip grade nine because MCAs are not administered in ninth grade. So then they go down to 10th grade where that reading, um, MCA is administered again. So what, one of the things that we've had an extensive amount of communication around is how MCA testing has become, um, not the most reliable set of data. Now, I think it's important data in, in the sense that, um, it does help us, help inform us of trends and, and, um, and areas of focus, and I'll come back to that in a second. But we recognize that, that it's a one-shot deal and sometimes, um, the value in MCA testing from administration has changed over the course of time. And so then we have a different emphasis on that specific assessment. So that's why I've also included the fast bridge data, which is at the bottom. And what this is, um, the fast bridge information, um, let me get the percentages for you because, I do have that. Oh, shoot. Um, the, the fast bridge data is a correlation of the percentage, the percentile of kids that are in the low-risk category. So meaning that they are most likely to, to show as proficient in the spring on MCA testing. So you're gonna notice some empty grids up here on that, um, that reading proficiency for, for fast bridge. That's because our district didn't use fast bridge until, um, 2017, 2018. Before then, what the district used was what was called, um, it was, um, Renaissance Star Assessment. Okay? So we're, we're digging into the archives to see if we can fill in this chart so we have that comparison. But I think it's important to see and note that what this information is in that bottom chart is an opportunity for us to look three times a year. So again, when I, when I came back and I talked about our whole, um, classroom achievement, and I'm actually gonna slide up just a little bit so I can show you the, when I talked about our academic foundation and universal screening, this is what this, that information, um, on the fast bridge reading comes from that universal screening. That gives us an opportunity to see how students are doing three different times a year in reading and then make a determination of, does a student need a very targeted intervention on maybe, maybe the sounds of words, or maybe the, the sounds of letters, or the combination of letters into words? So it really does provide an opportunity to know before this one-shot deal up at the top where MCAs are, are given, how, how is my student doing in my classroom? Okay? So this is our academic proficiency in reading and then you're gonna see the same multicolored chart in math. Okay? Now, on the, um, the MCA chart, you're going to see a, of the district comparison along with the state comparison. The reason there's not the fast bridge comparison is because again, what we're doing is we're using that as a predictor and a, and a, um, a universal screener to see how are our students doing here and what do I need to do to change my interventions so that they're most likely to be proficient at a state standard level? Okay? So that's, those are the, the foundational pieces that are, are part of our students reading well, our students being academically prepared. And this is the data that we use to help, um, make some of those determinations. Ultimately, what we're really looking for is making sure that our academic proficiency is, is fully culminated through graduation rates. And, um, as you can see, our graduation rates have been really stable and we are doing really well. When you have small classes of, uh, 75 kids, 73 kids, one or two students that don't graduate for whatever reason makes a big difference. Right? So that's why we don't sit at 100% some years. Okay? So let's talk just a little bit about some of the, of the things that are happening at our buildings. Couple of our elementary, um, highlights is our STEAM opportunities and our music, and our music within the elementary. As we also talked about, the power half hour is a really beautiful opportunity for our staff to know the, the specific skills that our students need to have to perform better at grade level and as we hope to enrich when they're already meeting standards, how can we have them do more? So that's, that's a really nice opportunity that is part of our elementary, um, K through five. Um, we have health and FIET in the elementary. And then the other piece that is really cool, that's unique to our elementary, are our family groups. So we've talked a little bit about how last year was our first year with family groups. And what's super cool about this is you've got the same group of kids who are going to be together throughout their elementary duration. So if I've got a kindergarten, I'm gonna have a group of a kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grader. And those kiddos are gonna be clustered together for the course of the years. As that fifth grader moves on and a new kindergartner comes in, they just switch spots. So that kindergartner who became a first grader is gonna be in the same group with that first, second, third, fourth. Right? They really get to know each other in a more familial structure and they get to do different activities, um, have, whether it's, um, around seasonal activities, they're, they have very specific lessons, and they have different adults that they're able to connect with besides just their classroom teacher or, um, the principal or social worker or whatever the case might be. So those are some pretty cool things that happen at our elementary building. You'll notice our secondary is a little bit more geared toward, um, electives. So obviously we have our core academic instruction, um, but you'll also notice, and we've talked about this a little bit, um, in having some pathways that really allow kids to understand courses that they can take that might, that might be in a business, a trades, a health and, health and human services, um, type of career. Uh, the block schedule has been discussed with, um, as, in the fact that that's a newer addition to the Painesville area schools. Our career and tech ed opportunities are absolutely amazing as we've talked a little bit about with our PAC center. I think it's also important to acknowledge that we offer 27 college in the schools courses. Why I think that's so important is because that saves parents financially. When kids have an opportunity to get those credits in high school, that's cost savings for them in the future. We have both band and choir, FIET and health, um, um, electives, innovation in arts, languages, and connect time. So those are some of the, um, the highlights of our secondary program.
Um, you have on there, uh, college, uh, courses, is that 27 credits or 27 different courses?
27 different courses.
And how many credits go to a course?
It depends on the university. I think it's usually one, one, it's usually one, like a semester credit. Now, credits are different because it's gonna be, um, our, some of our classes, when they're offered by quarter, they have to take them, we do some conversion to have them, them fit a semester class that's offered at a, you know, at a college when we have, they have to make, maybe take it on that what's called a zero hour. So they come in and they take the class all semester so that it can align with their semester class, um, because our courses are offered in the block schedule by quarter. So it gets wonky.
And I'm sure unfortunately, some, it just doesn't fit their schedule to.
Some of it just doesn't fit.
Yeah.
Yep, I would agree. All right. So all of this, whether it's the elementary work that happens for our power half hour, our family groups, um, the STEAM opportunities, the core instruction, the evaluation of, of intervention necessary, um, all of the, those things don't happen without professional development of our staff. So we do have a committee that is comprised of both certified and classified staff. We review a schedule and, and plan. A lot of that focus is on the strategic plan, on continuing education, um, needs and, and district initiatives. Something I do wanna call out as a, um, as a highlight here is the commitment to letters. So language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. Letters is a very intensive, um, process of really the science of reading. And what this has done is the, the commitment by the district was to have all elementary staff and the secondary ELA, English Language Arts, teachers learn through the letters program. And why I think that's so foundational is because that gives a whole different set of skills, um, when it comes to teaching, reading, and when we talk about that intervention and kids that need very explicit instruction, some of that can be done in the classroom instead of pulled out in a, in a different tiered intervention. Uh, two times a year, we are able to bring the whole district together for training. So paraprofessionals, food service, custodial, certified staff, everybody's together. Um, and then we also have some online resources that are available, uh, to staff for professional development as well. Another big part of our district is our technology. So you'll see, um, a number of devices. Our elementary students, pre-K for, through first grade and special education students have about 150 iPads. Second through fifth grade are about 270 Chromebooks. At the elementary school, those devices stay in school, they're not sent home, um, daily. They use what's called a Seesaw platform and they also use the Google Classroom. So as you can see at the elementary, we're really starting to integrate technology and, and how they can access, um, curriculum and access platforms through, um, both iPads and, um, iPads and Chromebooks. Our secondary students and staff, there are 710 Chromebooks, 116 laptops and desktops. So there's 493 Chromebooks for sixth through 12th graders. So each kid is assigned a Chromebook, those go back, home and back. A lot of the platform is through the Google Classroom. So this has also been an out. Um, so this has also been an out, a play, a way that students have been able to access our college courses online during the school day. That's been a, a good opportunity as well. So um, just a little bit more about our technology, innovation, creativity, and learning. Um, this is just a tiny little snapshot, you'll see this visual of all these icons. Those are all different types of learning platforms that our teachers are using in their classrooms. Um, and I think it's really important to understand how all of those um applications and processes. Um, have created a, a really um unique learning experience for our students. As we've kinda looked over the course of time, um, our devices have been a, a, a great way to make learning come alive. But ultimately, our teachers use the different tech tools to innovate more personalized lessons. And to really meet the needs of their students. So one thing that's really pretty cool is how um, over the course of time, our um. Our teaching has evolved to facilitation of creative learning. Um, you'll notice there's a, an example um outline on here for a science um. Unit that has been all online and come to life through online platform versus a, a textbook. Um, where it's, it's flat, it's stagnant, it's one-time printing. Now we're able to innovate and keep them growing and learning. So um, as we look to move forward, um, you know, the, our tech levy. And we're gonna talk a little bit about funding in just a, a little bit. Um, our tech levy allowed us to build the infrastructure and, and maintain some devices. But as we look at how technology is evolving and changing over the course of time, um, we're gonna have some needs to keep up with that, okay? Some additional innovative opportunities, things that are unique. Um, our elementary has a maker space, which is similar to our secondary innovation center. It really does provide um an opportunity for hands-on learning with tools and machines. That um, they will get to explore more and um on a larger scale. At the innovation center in our secondary program. Um, we've talked, we have um, um, machines such as a plasma cutter, shop bots. Um, we have virtual welding, we have live welding, uh, we have automotive base. Those are really unique innovative opportunities that our students have. Um, because of our space that has been provided by our community. So it's really pretty, uh, pretty amazing opportunities our kids have. Um, just real quickly, because um finance is part of our strategic plan and fiscal responsibility. Um, I just put some basic stuff about our, um, our finances. So um, our basic base funding is set by the legislature. Uh, we have a local optional revenue, um, we have, I have a typo on there, I gotta fix. Um, operating referendum, which was authorized in November, to which the district is extremely grateful, four hundred and sixty dollars per student. Um, you will see that there is a tech levy, uh, which is, it's a, called a capital bond. That generates approximately three hundred and ten dollars annually for our school district. Um, that is um, in effect through twenty-four, twenty-five. So as I talked about just a, a couple of screens earlier, um, as we look at how we utilize technology and um that evolves and changes. The use of the, the tech levy or that capital bond um will become really important in the future. So again, I think one of the things that is also important to recognize is that the district has rec, uh, received an increased Moody's rating. Um, I, before I was in educational finance, I can tell you that meant nothing to me. But the best correlation I can make is that I increased my FICA score, that would be my, my correlation. The school district has a really nice rating, so that saves our taxpayers money on bonds, and that's important. So I wanna acknowledge that because I think that also comes from some fiscal responsibility within the school district. So we talked a little bit about um, the money that comes in, how does the money come in, through our student enrollment. Our student enrollment, this is a snapshot from last year, the um, the greens are up, the reds are down. Um, so you'll see, the reason I had left that on there is so that people can just at a glance see how much student enrollment fluctuates. Throughout the course of the year. Um, our student enrollment at this point, here's our glance as well, you'll see our ups and you'll see our decreases. So then you might ask, okay, so what does our student body look like? So let's just take a little look at our student demographics. So the demographics of our district, where this comes from is from our um, the, the report card. That goes, comes from the Minnesota Department of Education. And all of this comes from the data that we submit about all of our students at the end of the year. So in, within our student population, you'll see that their count was nine hundred and eight. Well, if you go back up and look on the final count for, that I had for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, we had nine oh seven. So this student demographic is the final cleanup, all done, everything counted. So this is our, our final count, okay? So when you take a look at that, you'll see what our, our population demographics are. And then you've got a visual on the side with our, our racial demographics uh spelled out for, for us as well. So we also have a multitude of students that we serve. So uh, within the district, we serve students that have special education needs. Um, I included just this visual to let people know um about the service continuum that we have for students. Um, there, our, our special education process is really governed by federal and state law. And the visual just helps to identify how we, we identify if a student has a, a need for a five oh four plan or an accommodation plan. And if a student has a need for an individual education plan. Ultimately, we start with all students and then we uh funnel our service model in to meet the needs of our students. Um, that have very specific special education needs. We are a member of the West Central Education District and um, the West Central Ed District provides our Director of Special Education Services. Um, and they also provide our low, um, our low incidence services. Which means, let's say we had a student that ca, uh, moved into our school district that was blind. Um, they would provide a teacher to provide the services for that blind student because we wouldn't have a teacher to meet those needs. Uh, we also have student services that are specific to um, our English language learners. Um, there is a very specific process of identification, um, of the identification, um, the service model and, and exiting. Just like there is with our special education services. So let's talk just a little bit about our student demographics. So we have, um, this again comes off of our Minnesota Report Card. So you'll see, uh, we have English learners of special education. And then we have a, um, a set of um, uh, data here that is our uh free reduced price meals. Where that comes into play is because we've talked a lot about compensatory uh revenue. And so that, that number is what helps drive and dictate our compensatory revenue. So when you take a look at um EL students as of um, from last year, we had fourteen. Uh, special education students last year, we had a hundred and sixty-three. Last year, we had a hundred and sixty-four free reduced price meals and we had five, five homeless families. So then you take a look at that in comparison to, and when I say today, um, so you'll see the date that I used was the seventeenth of January. We have um thirteen students identified EL, eleven receiving services. A hundred and ninety-one, zero to twenty-one-year-old students receiving special education services. And two hundred and seventy-five students eligible for free reduced price meals. So I think what I wanna pause and just, and um, speak to that difference is that um. That has, has resulted in an increase of compensatory revenue for our school district. Which is really helpful and, and important because that was a source of funding that the school district um did not see. When the, um, when we were not completing free and reduced lunch forms as a result of free lunches. So those are a couple of things that have, have come out of that, okay? So what do our students do? So our students participate in a lot of different activities. Um, uh, you've got everything from um jazz band, pop choir, um, FFA. Uh, we've got elementary kids doing our, our school patrol, they're a part of DARE. We have all sorts of activities that our kids are able to participate in. In relation to Minnesota State High School League, you'll notice the, the areas that are identified that we are active participants from Minnesota State High School. Um, I reached out to Mike Jacobson and got some of this information. And so again, we keep asking, if this is not right, please, we would like to have this right. Because we would like to get the banners put, uh, put back up in the, uh, back up in the gym. So um, taking a look at the state participants, the dates are identified and where it is greened and bolded. Those were state championships. So not only do we have students participate in activities, we have students excelling in activities. Uh, the one thing, piece I wanna note for speech is that those are individual participants. That go to, they either qualify for the state um, state competitions, or they have won. And in twenty-twenty-one, we actually had two individuals that took home um state titles in speech, so it's pretty cool stuff, okay? So looking forward, where are we at right now, um, twenty, we're, we're gonna be entering into the budget season for twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, we're gonna be doing preregistration for secondary, kindergarten registration for elementary. And then we begin the program analysis, um, twenty-two, twenty-three revised budget is gonna be coming up. One of the things that, um, that, the reasons we do a revised budget is because um, there are variable sorts of. Uh, sets, sources of funding such as special education revenue. Um, that is very unpredictable and we very consistently um budget conservatively. Because I would never want to give money back in special education. I'd rather have um, bank on having additional funding versus coming up short. And then we, we're also going to be adjusting for unfilled positions. We're going to be doing program analysis, tech levy planning and analysis, strategic plan review. And really a facility, a facility analysis now that we have our, our operating referendum in place and we have some consistent funding. So there's a lot of stuff happening, kind of looking forward. But that's just kind of a, a little bit of a state of the district, I guess I would say. Um, I just want, do wanna add thank you to our community for the ongoing support. Um, our community is in attendance at events, concerts, banquets, programs, our community is involved. Um, a thank you to the parents and families within the district that give their time and talents. They serve our students as volunteers, they offer support when, when teachers ask. Um, that's a really important connection to have. And then finally, a thank you to the staff of the Painesville area school district for putting students first and looking uh future forward. So that's the state of the district as of today.
Okay, questions?
Is this shared outside of the district, is this in outside?
This will be, um, I will be recording this and posted, posting this as well, yeah.
This will be posted on our website?
Yep.
On the website?
Yep.
Any, be in written form anyplace. I'm just thinking, is there like, would realtors have this information to hand out to prospective people looking at housing in a town or things like that?
I want it to be posted on our website.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, the website, but something people can have, I mean, if I'm looking at a house and somebody hands me something about the school district.
My hope is that I can get um this information front and center on our website so that people can start to see. Um, and then when a, a realtor says Painesville area schools, they Google it, this would be one of the things that they see, yeah.
So if it's intended to be somewhat of an advertiser for the district, I'd for sure get that nineteen-eleven, fix it with the state. I believe there's no nineteen-eleven building yet.
There is a.
The gymnasium was in the forties.
There's, well, I can, I can, because the historical society has the same information. I can, I can, but it's, it's the core section of.
If you're advertising and you're gonna advertise, you're using a building from nineteen-eleven. And somebody's looking at it and they're looking and comparing schools where nothing starts till the sixties? How would you do that? And, 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 and you're dealing on a technicality. So the three-story building, as near as I know, was that building. That building is gone unless there's a back wall or the basement, which might hold, house the boiler and all that. Doesn't make any difference for education, but that, that's there. The gymnasium, I thought was done in the forties.
Yeah, and Bruce, I have all of that. Yep, I, and I have, and actually, that was one of the um, the things that we did as part of our school board orientation. I, I laid out the history and I've got it, I can pull that in and, and revise that.
But that's okay, when you're talking about going out to people and somebody coming for the job, they're having the community off of one of the sites. And they're looking at bringing their kids to school. The other thing is um, the MCA thing is, is a comparator. I don't know that Fast Bridge compares all the schools. Fast Bridge is more personal to the.
No, but it's, it's still based on norms that are comparative across the state.
Okay, well, MCA, everybody knows about it, so it's still a valid thing. And then I, as I looked at it, just, not to be critical, but pictures. So we had pictures when it came to the extracurricular activities, but what about the classrooms with our instructors?
I'm, I'm being honest with you. I ran out of time, I ran out of time.
Yep, and the innovation centers and the tech centers and all that, because picture's worth a thousand words.
Sure.
So you might have somebody scan through this thing and they're looking at pictures.
Yeah.
And they may not read the details, so.
I just did not, I did not, um, I ran out of time to grab the extras and I was not clear, so I can fix that for sure.
Yeah, I think it's very well, let me get the presentation. My last thought would be, um, who's responsible for keeping it updated now?
Uh, I would see this as an annual.
Yeah, I just.
So you do it once a year, um, kind of like yours, you know, the state of the state. How are things doing, how are we doing as a district? And what are our numbers today as we look back at the course over the course of one year?
I think that's important because I know some organizations where you look at their material, it's like ten years nobody's touched.
Yeah, yeah.
It has to be kept up to date, otherwise.
Sure, yeah. All right.
Okay, um, committee and organizational reports, I know you had a community ed meeting today, is there?
Yeah, just uh, it, it was nice to be able to have Chris there with us for her day two on, on the job and. And uh, and, and welcomed her to the community ed, um, uh, yeah, with us here at community ed in, in Painesville. Um, uh, pretty normal uh report outside of that, just kinda covered all the, the pause numbers, preschool numbers, the. Um, kinda what the, the fitness facilities are doing, you know, they've got a pretty big increase in Silver Sneaker members. And kinda first of the year fitness, uh, facility members as we kinda would expect. First of the year usually brings for most uh fitness centers. Um, and outside of that, we just had a lot of nice dialogue around programming, uh, programming that's working. Uh, that's been kinda showing to work and programs that, that maybe they're gonna take some opportunity to look at or utilize some outside resources. Um, to bring in some, some more expertise in robotics or other things that, that um, that, that we don't quite have. Or don't have the, the staff that are available to teach it to a community ed program. So just a lot of good dialogue that way, um, outside of that, it's kind of a, a pretty normal, normal report and a warm welcome to Chris.
I'm sure we'll meet her at the next.
Yep, she will be in the, at the February meeting.
The other committee here, we're releasing.
We had our C, um.
Oh, yeah, the legislative or the C.
Yeah, annual report and, and that was my first one to go to, so a lot of it was a bit over my head. And talking about some history things, I, you know, I don't per se have a lot that I would report on it. But I, you know, I don't know that it seemed anything out of place or having just come from the MSBA conference and, and knowing what the. Legislature's trying to do right now with the, with excess and um, and available money that the state has and what can they do? And you know, what, what kind of increases are we looking at? So just a lot of conversations around that is kinda what I took from it, but.
Yep, and one of the things, just as a reminder, C, there, the biggest focus of their organization is around equalization of funding. So um, when, uh, really looking at if, if there's um money that comes into a, a school district um through tax base. Um, there is state aid to help offset that impact at a, at a greater level so that it's equitable funding. Um, so equity in, or equalization is their, their big focus. But they are also really cognizant of issues that, that we have in, in districts such as ours, yeah.
Just because it's on my mind, I just throw it out there, I don't ask for a response now, but it's a legislative issue. If they go to free lunches and meals, what does that do to compensatory revenue and what are they thinking? Are they thinking about?
Yeah.
How we're gonna handle that, because we're gonna lose.
Yeah, that's absolutely, um, so one of the things that's already taken place, can I hop in?
Go for it, yeah.
So one of the things that's already taken place, um, and you'll notice that our, so we. Our numbers went up to a two hundred and seventy-five from a hundred and sixty-seven. Part of that is because of the completion of, of free and reduced forms. But the other thing that's been part of that is what's been called direct certification. And so there are, there are set criteria across the state that have just allowed um districts to um. Provide free lunches without forms having to be completed. So that has been one thing that, and yesterday, actually, I was at the MASA. Uh, Region Six Leadership Meeting, or Region Six Meeting and um Deb Hinton from MASA. Um, who is the executive director, gave a legislative report as well. And that's one of the things that, when she asked the question, a resounding yes, school districts have seen a very. School districts have seen a very marked increase in their um in that number from direct certification. So what I'm hearing through that dialogue is that there's going to be other ways to look at how to do direct certifications or things like that. Um, what it is absolutely on the radar um that that the universal lunch has some implications for compensatory revenue. But there are also avenues to take a look at that, so it's it's on the radar for sure.
In fact, that was one of a few complicated things that are coming around with potential adjustments to funding for school districts, but.
Yep.
Another committee reports, we'll go to student representative.
All right. Um, so it's a new quarter, that's exciting. Uh, there's a lot of sports tonight, I had to park way. But um, so for sad, we just had a second grade activity, which was really fun. Student council were preparing for the sweet fest, that whole thing's coming up. And NHS, we got our new members, um, we're inducting them February fifth, we decided today.
Nice.
So there's eighteen new members, so it's gonna be a big group. So we've been really active in the elementary school, we're having everybody sign up for shifts. And we reached out to all the teachers, asking what helps. So I've been helping with kindergartners and sister hands class. So that's been really good and now we're glad that we have eighteen more cuz I love to read months coming up. And we're gonna try to be really active in like the classrooms cuz the kids loving when we come read to them. Um, theater, they're practicing every day after school. So that's coming up soon, otherwise not much.
We got a one act play sub sub subsection this week?
Yeah.
Yes, on Saturday.
Yep.
That we're hosting, that's great.
Yeah, that'll be cool. So that's pretty.
Is public allowed to come to that or not?
I don't know, I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
I'm not sure, I'll have to look.
I don't think they are, but.
My sister's in that and I didn't sound like there was an invite for me.
Well, I need you. Well, there might be other reasons for that. Okay, well, thank you.
Okay.
No business, so we've got a new business, uh budget reduction resolution?
Yep, so annually, um, there's typically a uh a resolution uh really asking, I know, the district to review um via the budget, review the finances. Um, knowing that our budget was a that was approved was a deficit budget, I think it was it's appropriate to maintain this resolution.
Okay, is there a motion? I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Ron, second question, oh, second, Ron. This will take a roll call.
Cheryl.
Aye.
Cheryl.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Rachel.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye. Resolution has passed. Okay, review of the school board committees.
So this is just again to to review the committee, make sure everything looked correct. Um, these were set at the last board meeting, but it's just the final document with the board committees.
Okay, there are no questions, is there a motion to approve the committee's? Nick, Ron?
To approve.
I'll second.
Cheryl? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, okay, passes. Uh, calendar revisions.
Okay, um, so we had just very high-level discussion um two weeks ago at our our work session. Um, and I did reach out to leadership across the district. Um, and my recommendation is to have our first makeup day um in April. I felt that the president's weekend was too quick to turn around to have that be um uh not super disruptive. So my recommendation is to um to have April tenth be our makeup day, um our for a day that we need to make up. And then you'll see um that my my language that was added is that anything here forward will be added to the end of the school year. Um, so if in the event that we would have a closure um in making that announcement, I would add the date to add the makeup day. Okay, so that would be my recommendation for um addressing the the snow days.
Make a motion to uh to accept your recommendation.
Let me hear who makes the motions, is there a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oposed, okay, it is adopted.
All right, um informational item for you all, this week is uh paraprofessional appreciation week. Um, so the first resource is just the um governor's proclamation of the um of the week. Um, and then the second document is is just um, I will pull that up and just briefly share that with everybody. That is um just uh an identified list of all the paraprofessionals um that allow that to cast. Um, all the paraprofessionals that we have that serve um our students throughout the school district. Um, I know I've said in the past, um, it being a special educator, um, I could not have done my job without the paraprofessionals that served the students. And um, so I wanna just again extend my thanks and gratitude. So um, thank you to our paraprofessionals that serve our students across the district.
We add our thanks to all of them as well, this is the board.
Yes.
Yes.
Review of Minnesota School Board Association Convention. Um, so we're just gonna ask to go around and if you wanna give a brief uh review of what it uh what it meant to you, I'll just I'll just start and say that first of all, all seven school board members were at the convention. I thought the biggest plus for me is that we were all there, we had a chance to sit and meet each other and talk to each other and kinda integrates some of the uh older members with the newcomers, uh and that was a a real.
You might consider one of the older members.
You're not one of the older.
You're no longer in the freshman class.
You're now an elder.
As far as I was concerned, having been just elected chair, I tried to go to as many things that applied to that as I as I possibly could. And just kind of absorbing as much of that as possible, it's just it's a great event. Um, and I'll be anxious to see what the new new members thought about it, but we had a great speaker the first day. And we almost made it through the second speaker, but. She was good, too. But uh, we didn't have any snowstorms this year, that was one thing. Um, so just uh.
Sure, uh, yeah, I I thought was great, uh especially the training, although it was being, you know, felt like I was being fed with a fire hose. Uh, I still have the pamphlets and stuff that that had been passed out, so uh continuing to review those, kinda get, you know, better understanding. Uh, it has helped me as far as having uh some of these committees a little bit greater understanding of those committees. I agree with you, Rick, you know, we had a chance of of really uh being able to to spend that time together and and get to know, I think, each other a little bit more deeply, which which helps out uh a lot better. Uh, also, um, so of course, the 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 one word thing that uh you had asked when we uh checked in was uh mine was awesome. And the reason I chose that word was because meeting with other school board members, I think we have just an awesome team here as far as uh this this independent school district uh working together with each other. And I know it's it's, you know, still very new, but uh having community members that uh, you know, coming here are very professional. But yet, if we do disagree with something, we can walk away and we're still friends. Uh, because there seems like there's some a lot of dysfunctional school boards that are out there. So I think there's just a great group of people here, I think, great superintendent, you know, as far as leader and and the ones that we have. So and a fantastic community as far as that's important, so had a good time.
And having gone to a few of these, I think this was number eleven. Um, a lot of it was review, but at the same time, you can go into some of the um group sessions and go in-depth into things that you have just skimmed in the past. I looked into a lot of finances, which still is kind of baffling, even having been here this long. Um, the legislature had a long list of promises that are probably not gonna be fulfilled. That was an interesting one to go to and the speakers were awesome. That first one was just unbelievable.
Yep.
Just motivating. But it's it's always a a challenge to go down there and find more things and talk to more people. The um, the booths that we talk go to, the um vendors always have something interesting. There was a demonstration of a, it was a large table and it was a body inside of it and they could strip away layers of the body and cut layers of the body and show you just exactly what was inside of that person. And it was just unbelievable and I thought, wow, what a great thing until I found out it was fifty-six thousand dollars. But it was fun to watch. But I had a great time down there and I loved meeting our new members.
Oh, echo, yes, and uh Dr. Brown first day was was, you know, amazing, listened to just his um his story and then just how he brings everything back to just his real life and just kind of the those conversations about, you know, you know, that I guess we could all have, but you just, I don't know, he just has this means of of portraying that. But then um, then yeah, I you know, I echo everything else, you know, Governor Wall speaking, uh, it was it was great to hear him. It's great not to have a snowstorm, which is I've been, this this was my fourth time going to MSBA conference in the cities. We had one year COVID that we didn't get to go down there for. All three previous ones, we had to get back early cuz of the snowstorms. So this is the first time we were actually able to like get through a full MSBA conference. Um, uh, and actually, to that point, then to my last uh session on the last day, um, we just, you know, a similar notion, uh what Cheryl was saying. Um, it was it's about the school board support and school board member, you know, um it just emotional and 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 outside support and just listening to other school boards, uh, school members and people talking about, you know, things going on in their districts and some of the the tough challenges they've had. And brings back that idea, you know, we have an amazing district, we have amazing staff, we have amazing, you know, parents, we, you know, supportive community. Um, and that really makes a huge difference in in our roles here as well as, um, you know, what what the district able to bring to students. So it was great just to kinda, it was great to listen and then understand that you have, you know, you have we're not here on our own little island as a board, you know, we do have other boards that that have that availability to support and then the MSBA um have have resources as well, so just just kind of nice, nice conference.
I kinda feel sorry for you guys at the end here. I guess I'm gonna piggyback on what uh you folks have said, too. I guess for the public out there, uh, if you get an opportunity to to uh Google uh Adolf Brown and it's A D O L P H, Adolf Brown. And he, uh, my wife and I and I even had the kids listen to uh some of his uh stories online, so he's very good. Uh, he was definitely a highlight. Uh, I guess one of the other highlights uh was the uh trade show. Uh, of course, everything comes with a price. Looked into artificial turf and various things and uh, like I say, everything has a good price tag to it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it was uh, it was nice to walk through that. Uh, I did try to engage with different uh school board members from various towns, you know, throughout the state and uh kinda pick their brain as far as what they're going through, like you guys all kinda reiterated. Um, I will say one negative thing, uh, although I wouldn't wanna plan a big convention like that, but the I was uh, maybe I had two of high of expectations for these roundtable sessions. Uh, there was a little bit of a lack of space. Uh, we had everybody kinda crammed in and unless you got a seat and you were sitting by the speaker, uh, it was very hard to hear. But they meant well and uh my my hat's off to them because they did put together a pretty good conference. But that was probably the only negative thing that I took away from it. Um, I am gonna piggyback on your uh, Rick, you our quiz question as far as for our uh uh doing our attendance. Uh, I had to do a little bit of thought on that because when you said one word and it was really hard. Uh, I didn't wanna be a, you know, rose-colored glasses as far as how things are going. But then I didn't wanna be a Debbie Downer, so to speak, be down about things. But uh, I had to research and and look up the definition of evolve and I think that's pretty pretty neutral. Um, cuz the definition of 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 evolve is is a ever-changing and willing to go with change, you know, whether it's good or bad, so that's why I picked the word evolve, so I'm done.
You got off easy cuz next time it'll be a ten-letter word. No, I.
I agree with everybody else on what they said, so I might just be slightly more specific. Um, I right out the gate, I went to legislative platform, which was very interesting to me because the funding of our schools is really important from the state of Minnesota. And they have the number of twelve hundred and sixty-three dollars that they are short in funding our schools, twelve hundred and sixty-three dollars per pupil. Uh, we just got through a referendum at four hundred and uh sixty dollars. Uh, um, that was a surprise. And then they talked about asking for a five and a five for this next season. And it was kinda interesting, but then they had lots of numbers and so I was sitting there looking at these numbers and saying, this doesn't make any sense. So it looked to me like we really needed seven and a half and seven and a half. And my thought was, if we got the twelve hundred and sixty-three dollars, then our taxpayers in this area would be dealing with things that you can't figure out like inflation and things like that. This is basic educational kind of things, goes right to C and all the rest of those things. They talked really great about this trifecta and I've heard about that for as long as I've been on the board. And there's one political party controlling all parts of Congress right now in the state of Minnesota. And so afterwards, I went up and asked, I said, well, why did we ask for five and not seven and a half? Cuz you're leaving a hundred and fifty-six million dollars on the table here. How how come we always are asking for short? So if you if you got this trifecta and you think it's so great, well, we were told that we probably couldn't get that anyway. And she says probably just as well, because they're already reneging on what they talked about. So this is very frustrating, but anyway, that's the state of Minnesota and all their politics. Um, went to two seminars on financial reporting. One was um, I thought was more on a current basis, kinda like a monthly one. But it wasn't, it was more analysis of the audit statement. And we have an excellent auditor, I think, that describes that very, very well. What I was actually looking for, and it came up in the second one, is when we go out for a referendum, we start talking about our reserve fund, right? But in all the stuff we see here, we don't know where that moves and changes to. And the the person that put the the monthly one on said, it's very good to have the reserve fund out there on a monthly basis. So the public can see the reserve fund go away and come back. Because if you look at all we talked about in this referendum and previous ones, it's always revolves on the reserve fund or the, and we don't really say anything about it. And I just thought it was fascinating. Then I went to another one on four oh three B and retirement options for people in school systems. It was very interesting. Um, the gentleman um that was putting that on kinda liked the four oh three B as a a good alternative, um, but they presented other options that are out there. And then the last one I went to was teacher of the year, which was very fascinating. It was from um up by uh um Onamia. And um, they had um fifty-six percent, I believe, Native Indians in the school. And they were talking about their culture and stuff, stuff that we have addressed. It was just interesting what they did. And so the teacher of the year presented a lot about their district, about the area and how glad she was and uh being nominating the Lord and all that. But the school board was there also and they all got up and talked a little bit about it, it was very cool.
Wow. I guess I'm the last one. So I echo everybody, I mean, it was at times overwhelming for me, being a new board member, honestly. Um, but it was great, I really enjoyed the speakers, everything. Thomas and I attended the district meeting. Um, and she said suggested something about reorganizing the district a little bit, cutting down. Um, like downsizing cuz she has like right now forty-seven districts that she's trying to oversee. And some of them have other districts that have like four. So she's trying to kinda make. So she's trying to kind of make her time more useful, if that makes sense. And then there was also talk about bringing civics back in later on in high school. Just guys to refresh records, so, other than that, it was great, so.
It did bring some extra papers from the con, the one that I went to on um, IEPs and ba- basically, free and, free appropriate public education. If anybody, anyone would like one to read through, it's got different cases in it.
I just, one last thing, because, but we won't go around again, but I just, one of the things about going to this is that you get all these ideas, and I think we always have to be thinking outside the box that maybe, you know, what can we do that would be different or innovative? And that's, one of the things that was neat was to go around and talk to districts that were doing something outside the box. And one of them was Monticello that has elementary classrooms that never meet inside the school, they are outside every day, five days a week, at a park. And they do all their education outside, they do have a building where they can go in if it gets thirty below or whatever, but but these kids are also, and these are like first, third, fourth graders. Um, uh, innovative, I mean, it's just a program that that kind of blows my mind. And I I think of what other things might be out there and always keeping our minds open to what, what we can provide that might be different from other, other schools, um, that might be attractive to people. Anyway, that's one of the neat things about the convention, too, is just seeing all, all the innovation that's going on out there. So next uh, meetings, you schedule.
Um, we do have a West Central Ed uh, District Board meeting, so Gerald, that'll be your first, first time uh, seeing them. And then I do want to just call out the, that the February fourteenth work session is the, is the one-thirty meeting. Um, I know we have a couple of members that won't be here, we'll still have a quorum. Um, but um, that's at one-thirty in the afternoon, so we can have our student presentations, because those, we had to cancel in December because of weather, luckily. So, um, more to come, um, watch the agenda if there's any that change, any, you know, we can talk about.
Okay, I guess I just wanted to let it be known, um, that I'm going to be in uh, Florida, but I do have the address and the place where I'm gonna be. And I will be in their uh, the Holiday Inn, um, in the uh, breakfast area, so it'll be open, so. I guess my intentions are to be on it Zoom.
Okay.
Is that, is that what you call it? We're doing it by Zoom or Skype or?
It'll be via a hangout, and then I'll have, I'll publish the um, the virtual meeting so other people can log on at that time as well then.
Okay.
I will not be here.
Okay.
I'll also be in Florida, but not with Ron.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So if I'm understanding that right, on February fourteenth, um, we're gonna have that meeting, uh, you said one-thirty, and then there's still gonna be a meeting at six o'clock that evening?
Nope, just one-thirty.
Just the one-thirty meeting, okay.
And there's, and it's just the work session, there's no action, no?
Okay, now we're gonna sit here for a while, because who's gonna adjourn?
I will adjourn.
Okay, sure, glad we have someone here. Is there a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. Now, we have to sign. It says sign here, but I don't see it.